To order and give you sixty minutes. And we will start the roll call. Trustee Booker, your trustee Woods, your trustee Owens, your trustee Johnson. Trustee Grease, your trustee Thompson here, President Montgomery here. And we invite the audience to join our therapy. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, with everyty and everyth for all. And the next thing on our agenda is the party person design we heard.
There are no persons present.
Thank you. And then the next item on our agenda is elected officials and staff reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments about any information? That was in the packets? If not, we will move to the next item, but I do want to remind people, if you have headphones, please silence them. But tonight, we have something that we haven't. And maybe not glad you're not remember, we did it during our meeting. But tonight we have a special presentation. We want to take this opportunity first to welcome Mr. Edmund Graves. Please to his first time serving as a trustee in the village. And then Mr. Amos Owens, who's all dressed up to. To. Sweet Chinese, what you say? It looks about the same. To make it really official. So at this time, we work and swearing in both of them today. And family and friends, you are invited and encouraged to take pictures. I don't know if any. If any of us.
I'm taking photos.
Okay, because we want to make sure that we capture them in our. Paper, so which one do you want to go first? Maybe you can go after the order. If you want to go there. And the clerk. That's Karen Hurd. And Mr. Reeves, if you want to come up close to you, come and take some pictures at you. I'm talking about this.
All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Hi, say your name.
Hi, Edmund Graves.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of village trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered from the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State.
So helping out.
So helping out.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Hi, say your name.
Hi, Amos Owens.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been appointed or elected to the village office trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So helping out.
So helping out.
Welcome back, trustee involved. Now you get ready more. The next item on our agenda is. Our consent agenda, which includes consideration of our minutes of April seventeen twenty twenty three meeting. Consider approval of volunteer board commission and committee appointments. And consider approval of the heart recreation department, yes, the plan, R and P. And each one of those items are in our packet, and I just want to say it relates to. The volunteer board commission and committee. Kudos to staff and the survey that was developed and put out. I don't know, we're over eight hundred. Close to eight hundred, yeah? Responses and because of that, we had a lot of people applying to serve our committees. So we have, we wasn't like every committee had all of its openings, but those that we did have, we were able to. Assign us some new people. We may have reappointed a few, not many. But we have a bench. So hopefully we'll be able to go back to maybe next year, people will apply this year. If there was not an opportunity, they may be able to be reconsidered for next year. Or in the event somebody steps down before the term is up. We, we do have some other options, so with that, in your packet, there's a part of consent agenda, I wanted to make that. Comment, were there any questions? And the trustee appointments are also in here. Yes. So have you? He that was serving those to pass. So I have not, for instance, finance, no.
So we would.
What? Yes.
I actually, I looked into the ordinance on that. So it says that the first meeting, the chair is elected by the body. So for like personal and finance, we would just elect a body or.
Other questions? If not, we have a motion to approve, and there weren't recommended motion in the packet. For the committees and. Appointments.
I move to confirm the following, the trustee appointments and the volunteer appointments to the village board. Boards, committees and committees for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Well, since everything is on the consent agenda.
I don't have to.
We can, we can just do a, a motion to approve the consent agenda, okay? So there won't be a friendly amendment to that.
I think we drove.
Yeah, or for that, I mean.
I will withdraw my motion and the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, it's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Woods to approve the consent agenda. All vote in favor? Any opposed? I have the motion here, thank you. The next item on our agenda of the new business is to consider appointment of a vice chair for the twenty twenty three, twenty four village board meetings. And this is something that we will do annually. In the event that I'm not able to be at the meeting. To cheer, we want to make sure that we have someone that would cheer the meeting. And not that night try to figure it out, so is there a motion?
Trustee Owens and nominee Renee Booker.
I'll second that.
If he votes accept.
But then moved by trustee Owens and second by trustee Thompson to recommend appointment. Trustee Booker to serve as vice chair for the twenty twenty three, twenty four. Year. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? I have the motion here, how many meetings did you have to cheer with that one? I didn't take my vacation. The next item on our agenda is to consider resolution twenty three oh five. Operating and repayment of general obligation north for fire department. Project bonds for the Glendale Fire Station, and I know the chief is here. I am sure.
And I got virtual, thank you, man. Most of you were on board in fall when the board first were acting to. Approve an initial resolution to repay the city of Glendale. For borrowing to behalf of our department to reconstruct the fire station from the city of Glendale. For those of you who are new, we do not have the, the North Shore Fire Department does not have the ability to do general obligation bonding on our own, because we're not a tax entity. And that's where the best interest rates can be gotten for government. So historically, the, each of the seven municipalities will take a turn to borrow on behalf of the department, and then the other six pay that community back their portion. Of the debt based on funding formulas in place for the department. So there's a formula that breaks down percentages that we should need to chase our ship or department. So this resolution tonight comes back to the board, recommended by the North Shore Fire Department Board of Directors. For passage, this is saying the final numbers are in the municipal bond and the general obligation bond sold. Last Monday and are now, the numbers are not estimated, they're on the details, specific numbers. So that chart is in appendix A of the resolution that's closed. So that would be brown areas portion estimated at this point, because that funding formula changes on a five year basis. So it's specific to through twenty twenty four right now, and then starting with twenty twenty five is a revaluation. That is really intended to be a smooth transition if there is any change, so I wouldn't expect it to change significantly. At the time, so what you're being asked to do tonight is to basically reaffirm, and then this goes back to the city of Glendale, saying yes, we will pay the city of Glendale back. Our portion for the next twenty years of that borrowing.
Questions? Trustee Owens.
I'm just trying to get a better understanding of all the numbers. In the letter. The. The application bond. Eight million, seven hundred. Four thousand. But then. In the, the resolution. Eight million, six hundred and eighty five thousand, so I just wanted. To kind of understand what the difference is.
Yeah, so you're looking at. The resolution, the first page of the resolution, you're not, I think, just on the same page.
Right.
We're on the same page, go on. Twenty three oh one, let's go on, so that is the. The difference in some costs. That are charged by there for the borrowing. The actual reimbursement is the eight point seven four. Yeah.
Other questions?
Just for information purposes too, so fair, it is also our financial advisor as well, so anytime we go out to borrow. That's typically how we're just paid is through that process. There's no way your financial advisor will be or anything like that, so it's through the borrowing, so that's a very common practice that we see. Throughout all municipalities.
Other questions? And this chief, is this unanimous vote from each board?
The board, so you, this board needs a simple majority.
Right.
Right, but you have to get all seven to approve it, so you're the first one to take it up tonight. Shorewood seven thirty tonight, and then a couple more. Stewards. Any further questions?
If not, we do need a multiple narrative recommended.
I move the resolution twenty three dash five, operating repayment. The general obligation of the fire department project fund. For the Glendale Fire Station.
Is there a second? I'm sorry. It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee. To approve the resolution designated the. Operating and repayment of general obligation. For the fire department. We will take the roll call vote. Trustee Booker, trustee Woods, trustee Owens, trustee Johnson, trustee Grease, trustee Thompson. President Montgomery. Resolution is down. Thank you. And if you haven't been down that way, they're working already.
Yeah, specialist payment's done. Today they were supposed to start this week, demo machine, when they tell you they're gonna start on Monday, I said it's five twenty three. See that as tomorrow.
And a picture out of proposed design, is it on your website?
I don't know if it's on the website, but I can send some pictures around.
And that might be something to add in our.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda is to present products and recreation department general overview. And that is this Danny, well. Mother, is that the explanation?
Good evening. So there are two bases, and we would just like to take this opportunity to kind of do an overview of what parks department does. Especially when we are looking to the future and thinking about any changes to maybe tax levy or maybe additional. Full time employees for the rec department, so you know, it's going to give a brief general overview, kind of tell you where we're at, and then. So a reminder, because it's not something to take action on, this is just informational only at this time. So the rec department, actually the parks and recreation department, we are in charge of recreation programming. Rental management, the bill also done, Tom Doley Community Center, and two village park shelters. We also do seasonal operation around your pond that opens June fourth this year, and will run seventy two days and close in August. We are totally down, down operating now, so cross your fingers that that continues to be the case, because other municipalities aren't like that, we would like this this year. We do park meetings for Best Remedia River Park, Barikazol, the new community square, Public House fifty five. We do have like, Uptown does do like the mowing and things like that, but any additional like programming where. We do, I believe, the trees and gardening there, correct?
Once, once they're there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then Village Park and Park, and then once it's created, the End Mile Park. And then we also work with the special events committee on special event coordination, like the community vibes for July and coffee tree lighting. So this is a little bit of a breakdown of our services, year round, we do programming, but we do increased programming in the summer, we have tennis. Camp. An increase of swim lessons, we have our own at the pond, we're normally around, we just have them at the office school. Community center rentals is year round, as well as hiring and training seasonal staff. Like as mentioned earlier, the special event coordination, that is a year round process that just doesn't start, you know, a month before those events. And then we are at the staff liaison for two committees, the Parks and Recreation Committee, as well as the Special Events. And then we also work with the marketing communications coordinator, marketing and promotion, we do three rec guides. And we also do the summer fun event day. And then seasonally, typically from May through August is my biggest time where we see that increase of. Offsite activities, so hopefully this year goes away, so we can get to that. And then. So our department structure right now is the Parks and Recreation Department, me, and then we also have TJ Watkins, who is a part-time employee, and then. Slash admin, marketing communications coordinator, and a part-time admin, he's there right now, I believe, just Monday mornings and I'll take Thursday. And then also, just like the seasonal employees, so depending on the season, we can have anywhere from five to fifty seasonal, seasonal employees at a time. So you should probably be familiar with the budget. And so from the general fund, we have that amount that covers just typically the. Full time employee wages and salaries, printing services, office supplies. Maintenance and professional training and memberships, so that goes towards TJ and I. Certifications like OGI, so we can drain our own lifeguards every year. Alright, so then the other part of our budget is special revenue fund, so recreation programming. We have a projected expense of seventy five thousand dollars, and we receive no tax levy support for that special event fund. We combined a few years ago, the Park Pond and Community Center, we saw like. A little bit of struggle in the Park Pond Fund, so then we combined it with the community center, because that is bringing in revenue from rentals. So we're projected. Seventy nine thousand plus eighty thousand for those expenses, including just like the facility maintenance, staff, and other. Especially the ponds, like the water management, we have Sherco who comes in and to follow our quarry. For those who don't know, our facility at the pond is fully coordinated, which is different from any other facility in the state, where most sand bottom. Are like filtered or not filtered, and ours isn't filtered, but it is coordinated. So we're special in that sense, but it takes a lot of money to coordinate that. And then for the special events, this year you guys allowed or granted five thousand dollars from the tax levy. This is because you've seen a decrease in donations and like external. You know, funding from sponsors and donations and things like that, so thank you for that. And then finally, we have this very low donation fund, which was given, I believe, how would you know the year? But we split that fund with the library, and we only use it for its summer programming, so we'll be using some of that this year.
Do you know how much you will be applying this year?
From that plan, I believe it's three thousand.
Yeah, the fund balance for that is just over, right around seventy thousand. But so that's something that we try to. I mean, at some point it will be done, but we try to stretch it out as long as possible, so about three thousand for. Parks and Recreation, and just over three thousand.
And in the past, we haven't used that, give that fund as far as I've been here, so this will be the first time that we kind of tap into that to cover some of the expenses that. Like aquatics and some of the others on our program, speaking. So this is just a brief overview of our wonderful village. We are a municipality-based parks and recreation, and that will come into play as we go into the next slide, so I just wanted to give you this upfront, so then when we get to the other slide, it'll make a little bit more sense. Alright, so I'm gonna compare a little bit of. What we found as far as other. Parks and Recreation or Recreation Departments in the state, and how that kind of compares to maybe our budget structure or our department staff structure. So first up is the city of Gifsiderberg, so this is also municipality-based. Parks, Recreation and Forestry, so obviously right away you notice that forestry is part of their domain of responsibilities, and that's, you know. Theirs department staff structure shows that as well, they have a lot of forestry aspects to that. But their general fund. Is quite a lot, and I think that. Backing up, sorry, they manage thirty four total parks, seven of the thirty four parks that are rentals available, so I mean, this is. They have a bigger department, and they have, but about the same. Square miles, sorry, they also have special revenue funds, they don't, similar to ours, they receive no tax levy support for the rec. The rec programming one, but then they do receive about seventy thousand dollars of tax levy support for the pool, which is also pretty comparable to what we're receiving as well. And because pools are expensive to run, that just, it kind of evens out. They have decreased programming for fall, winter and spring, so whereas we do three whole separate rec guides, they only do two, they do a summer guide, and then they also, and then they just do a fall, winter, spring. They also have a budget for a senior center, and that is completely their stuff, like a separate account, and they work for that as well. So different from ours as well is the special events are run by the foundation and the chamber of cards. So they do all the funding, raising, and then all the formation as well. And then for a little bit extra support, they have the Cedarburg Friends of Parks and Recreation. And while we would love to have something like that, I don't think the village would run every support through the foundations, it just would not be very feasible for us. Alright, so next, Village of Ungrove, this is a smaller municipality, right now they're a very small staff. And it sounds like, according to some. People that we've worked with through like the Wisconsin Parks and Recreation Association, that they. Have not had any love filling these positions, just because it is very like minimal, and they're not paying very much for that position. So a lot of admin staff is filling in at this time, but they also do a lot of co-op with Weskego and New Orleans, so they're still operating programming. So their general fund is somewhat similar to ours, but they also. Don't have that much to manage, they're managing one park total, and in that one park, they have like a basketball court, they have. A pond that freezes over the winter that they can ice skate on, there's. It's free, as long as bikes can save, to do that, the pool and splash pad. That's not even maintained by the Parks and Recreation or the Recreation Department, because that's handled by the Parks Department, or like the Department of Works. They do have some special events, like Tuesday tunes, Friday's like Snow Beer Garden. But that is all sponsored and pretty much coordinated by their sponsors, so minimal interaction with special events.
Danny, if you don't mind, just some, right, what is co-op means?
Oh, so that means that. They just work with other communities where the other communities are like the lead on a program, and they offer it to their community for like a residency. So we do that with the North Shore, so we offer programs from Nicolay, Shorewood, Whitefish Bay, Mapon, Thiemspel. And I'm probably forgetting someone, but we all kind of cooperate in that, and then people can sign up. For also, it's like. If we can't provide those resources, like we don't have a kitchen. And run off cooking classes, so we can spend money on trying to create a kitchen facility.
Do we do co-op events in lakes too, so we have a pond. And if you're resident, you pay one fee, but if you're not, you pay a different fee. So is that included in the co-op, or somebody from Glendale, or they would have to pay non-resident?
Correct, but we used to be a lot of non-residents, actually, a bulk of our memberships are non-residents, so even though it is a little bit. More expensive for those non-residents to buy that, they're the ones who think it's the best, so I think it's their money's worth. Alright. So Village of Crafton, again, just a little bit north of us, their department structure is somewhat comparable to ours, except for the fact that they have a little bit more administrative assistance specific to their department, as opposed to shared. Administrative systems, and then they also have some line specific for the senior center, so that's a separate fund, and then they also have that recreation supervisor, as well as like an admin assistant specifically for that. So when you see people with. Senior center and with a budget attached to it, you usually see an increase in programming related to like senior citizens, because they also have like that space available to them. So general fund, close to eighty thousand. Again, you see the special revenue funds. You see the special revenue funds, they have a lot of special revenue funds, um, the park and open space. That is tax levy supported, about forty thousand, and then which was interesting to me was the park recreational facilities fund. That was ninety-nine percent funded by um, naming rights and community donors. So that was pretty impressive and because they also have a lot of park uh, improvements and. Projects coming up, so it's pretty cool to see that people are willing to get involved. Um, products and recreation, again, similar to Seaterburg, they have decreased programming and fall, winter and spring. Um, and then that increased in the summer, I think most of their programming happens outside. They do have some indoor facilities available to them to use, but I think most of their programming outside. Uh, again, special events that's coordinated by the Chamber of Commerce, like Crafton Park Society. And then their live music in the park concert series is run by Crafton. Are contributing to those.
You got it.
No, I'm like, I feel like it's time for me to stop talking, uh, so Village of Shorewood. This one is a little bit different than all of the rest, this one is a uh, school district-based recreation department. So all of the funding for like the senior resource center and um. Parks comes out of the village fund, so it doesn't come out of the school district, it's all village, and then for a school district, um. That's kind of where it gets a little tricky, so the tax levy gives. The twenty-two, almost twenty-three million dollars towards the school district, and then the recreation or like. The recreation and community services get one million, um, almost two million in support. So I think that's quite a significant amount, um, so I. Did want to note that like again, the senior resource center, they have one point eight F T S and then they do have their separate funding for that. Um, the school district also has a fitness center and I don't know the hours, but I know that it's open to alien, they offer classes and good. Um, just open workout space too. Um, again, special events, like the farmer's market for July, Shorewood Hill are all run by. Side organizations like the foundation and other like volunteer groups. So when looking at all of them, they all had similar like operating budgets, like. Obviously, those that had more parks or park facilities, there was an increase, but if you did the breakdown, it was very comparable to ours. Um, the only differences were that with increased responsibilities, they also had the staff to support those responsibilities. So that's a little bit different than us, we have two-person department and then we also are doing just as much, if not. Some of those activities like the special events, love to do it, but some cases it's a little exhausting. Um, and then the other big takeaway that we noticed was the additional community support. Whether that was through funding or just the different organizations all working together to contribute to. The organization and coordination of those special events, um, a lot of effort goes into those and it just. It doesn't take one person, it takes many, so just all of that, and then if you guys were interested. In this PowerPoint, I did like all the resources that I used for that information, so if you want to send it out to you. And you can take a little deeper dive if you'd like, um, and then. Any questions?
Yeah.
I have a question, you play with the village. What is it that we're missing that you think?
Oh, that's a tough question, um, I, I think if you. I think it comes down to a lot of factors, I think that there's a lot of good organizations in our community and that kind of splits our resources. So we do have the Run Your Junior, Junior Women's Club, we have the Booster Club, we have all of these organizations that are separate from each other. And we're all going towards the same goal, but no one's talking to each other. So if we can find a way to bridge that gap between all of the different community organizations. And rather than, you know, fighting for the same money towards the same goal, I think that would significantly. Improve our position that where we're at now, because if we're all fighting for the same thing, we shall be. Fighting together rather than fighting separately.
One call, question. Um, I'm a dog. One thing that's missing in the village town again, is a dog park, so I have to go outside the village and take my dogs, like you run. You also have to pick up poop, most people poop on their dogs' poop on my property, so it would be great to have some place for all the dogs to kind of hang out and have a good time.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that there is opportunity to develop some free space into that. Part of the comprehensive um, outdoor recreation plan is to assess those situations and scenarios. Um, to maybe develop one of those parks close to home, um, I think as far as the. Picking up other people's dog poop, um, that's a big pet peeve of mine, and I think. People should be neighborly and take after themselves, um, and I think that can be seen from community to community. And it's not just in ours alone, but I think if people are respectful enough with each other, hopefully they'll do the right thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Um, I'll let Tyler speak, but one thing I think, um, with having more publicity. More um, information in our, um, the tracker and other places you may find this. It's because I know the pond is a hidden gem, there are people that don't know anything about that. But with the farmer's market kind of up here, they will find out, so you may see moves in activity.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that that's part of the reason we got Kerry as marketing and communication coordinator. But also I think just making sure that residents and other like stakeholders know where to go for that information. Because most of it is out there, it's just a matter of maybe redirecting people to the appropriate places rather than going to. Sources that aren't campusable viable.
Thanks, President, uh, so a few items first, you know, Danny, thanks for, that was a. Perfect consultation, just to kind of tee up a policy discussion that will start today, but we'll continue to have is. The future of parks and recreation, and just so you know, you know, every few months we'll have a different department come in. And just to give you a snapshot of the services they're offering, just as a restructure for you. Uh, so then when we get to budget time, you know, some of those discussions are, are, are relative. Um, you know, all departments in village are competing for resources, specifically financial resources. And, you know, now that I've completed my first year, I would say, um, you know, like, sure. In other departments would be great to have more financial resources, absolutely. Um, but if we zone in on parks and recreation, this is one where we do have to take action. Um, one way or another, what I mean by that is right now, what's being asked of our parks and recreation department is not stable, so. The two people, when you compare what other communities are doing. Um, we're asking two people to pretty much do what departments three, four, five people are doing. And so every two weeks, when I get Danny's timesheet and I have to approve and see how many additional. You know, hours she's putting in to continue the hours, you know, it's, it's a constant reminder for me, especially when we're in the peak season, so. Um, you know, it's one of the things that, you know. You know, as Trustee Johnson asks, yeah, there's other things that we could probably do with that person, but first and foremost, having that. Probably help, um, you know, Danny and TJ work life balance to be better. Uh, one thing that we had talked about in previous board meetings was working with the school district on a joint activity to help with. Uh, uh, sports programming in the community, so that would be another area that we could lean into as well. Um, but otherwise, if we stay at two, which other communities has you seen they've done that. But that means we have to consider a different service level, um, and that, that would, you know, there's a few ways that we can certainly go about that. Um, but that would be, you know, sitting down with Danny and reviewing her time to identify what are some stoppings, so. Um, that'll be something that as we get closer to this year's budget and next year's budget, those will be internal conversations we'll be having. And then we'll be asking for your input and reaction to some options that we'll present down the road. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, that's where one of the reasons why I was really back to now the marketing communication director. And some of the funds, special revenue funds that Danny oversees, you know, trying to get some more promotion of that hopefully will help the revenue. Uh, so when we look at these rental spaces and with the pond, yeah, that was one of the core reasons why we wanted to move the farmer's market. Um, I mean, when you're in an empty parking lot, what are you promoting? Um, versus next to a vibrant village pond, which I think we all see as a true gem of the community. So that's part of that bigger picture that we're hoping to promote for, for round gearing to help. Um, you know, the different funds and budgets that Danny manages, so that's all part of that picture. And, you know, just wanted to make sure that was on your radar as we continue with the policy discussions.
Have you ever thought about potential naming rights with some of the facilities or areas?
I think we have done some of that, like Badger Mia River Park, that's obviously maybe right, um, and then like as we started to work towards, you know. Um, other projects and parks, I think that's another opportunity to start that up again, um, we did. Times concession slash bathroom project, we did a five first, like a grant, and hopefully we'll have a response soon. But that would be a huge help, but I think, yeah, that, that's something to keep in mind as we move forward with some of those big projects.
And then just to add to that, so like Community Square, Tom out of Harper, and we are two most recent parks. You know, both of those, you know, are, are names that, you know, if we wanted to discuss at the board and open that up. Now, that would be an interesting policy discussion, I'd be curious to hear the board's reaction to. Um, one thing I would note is that would be, you know, typically that's a one-time revenue. And a lot of things that we're talking about with the Parks and Recreation Department, it's finding a revenue source that would be. Annually to help the operating, so, um, you know, I think that would be, you know. If we did some kind of naming rights, that would help for some of our capital costs of parks and recreation. Um, but we would have to think of a, a different way that we can help support the operations, which is a different policy discussion on it, so. If that is something that the board would be interested in, I would, I would be more than happy to have that as a future agenda, you know. Uh, for you to discuss more, I mean, yeah, I think first identify what, what we would be, what item or what area. What we'd be looking to, to name and then bring that, I know like Tom knows those. More long-term residents, even the adults, and they did, that's why we mentioned the name that. But there are resources that are still being used. So the last one thing about the human rights is like if you open it up to something like that. You know, a, a community also has to be cognizant of the fact that someone may come for, you know, wanting to have the naming rights. That you don't want the naming rights for, right, so that's where we would have to have a very, um. Uh, well, outline process that would allow the municipalities flexibility in case that. Issue or, or situation evolves, right?
Other comments or questions? If not, there's be no visit the presentation, so thank you, uh, Danny. For that information and hopefully we'll see you all at the pound in this time, or at least at the pound, they're both being the same.
Or the community side.
Yes, one, before we move on, one last thing to know, I think it was in the part, it was in the department or staff reports. Um, if, if anyone, there's been some discussion about fourth of July specifically, praying that there would not be a parade against here. Um, Danny took the lead and, and we worked on a response. Um, that would be going out to the community this week, so we just wanted to do as a board to see that and pack it. Um, but, uh, to summarize, we, we, we mentioned that that decision has already occurred for twenty-three. Uh, but there's, um, you know, if people want to get involved in the twenty-twenty-four, potential parade planning, you can. But we do mention, I mean, this is a funding issue. Um, I continue to be with businesses, I'm in the forties now, as far as number of businesses I've met this year. Um, exploring uh, some sponsorships and we've had some step forward, there's some nice sponsors for sponsorships, but. You know, unless I can find that municipality or organization who's willing to give ten, fifteen, some thousand. That would really change the funding formula for special events. Uh, or it could be a person, uh, that's where we would have to manage the budget that we have today. So I just wanted you to be aware that's in the packet, only going out this week. And hopefully that will be a, a helpful narrative for, you know, if people want to get involved, tease it up, they can get involved for the twenty-twenty-four planning.
Yeah, absolutely, it was lovely to enjoy everybody joining in the efforts to bring that to life again, I know it's been a few years that we've had it. For different, in various reasons, um, but yeah, we would welcome any support that the community provides, um. And I hope that that letter doesn't discourage anybody and rather like really just continues to. Activate from that community engagement, because we really need it and I know that people want it, so if people can step up and. Support that, that'd be great.
And hopefully not be a one and done, but continue.
Yeah, absolutely, just more sustainable support, definitely, I think you.
Alright, thank you, um, the next item on our agenda is to consider revolution twenty-three oh six. Designating the American Rescue Plan Act funds to general fund reserves. Um, how would you want to?
Yep, that'd be great, Mr. President, so a few meetings ago, we talked about doing one the audit. Again, and we talked a little bit as far as it for, um, so one of the things that's going to help us moving forward, we have the bond readings. Uh, done by Louise is to try to, um, uh, increase and improve our general fund reserves. So this was one strategy that we discovered in that, that was, this resolution will memorialize that. To make the art of funds to our general fund reserves.
And some of us who are on the board, a few years ago, this, these dollars we were discussing. To help with, um, Tim Mount Park, but because we got full funding for that, this gives us not really even move this back to general.
Most importantly, this will put us in compliance or bring out policies which I started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question related to moving it over there, but there's still a timeframe where these dollars. Need to be spent down, so are we spending these dollars down first? And have the other dollars just sit in there, all of that working, I think it's twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, correct, Trustee Johnson said twenty twenty-six, the, the funds needed to utilize. This, this is technically the action of utilizing the funds, so it is what we call has that, and then when, uh. Derek fills out the report, he makes a claim in this amount. Uh, which will count as utilizing funds and then it sits there, and this will help give us the reserves that we gain, we're claiming in as lost revenue. Uh, and then whenever we get a point in time that, you know, the tit isn't a better situation, then we'll be in a better situation with the general fund reserves. So we could use it as a, you know, if you, if you wanted to help, uh, fund a one-time project, you can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh six.
I moved to approve resolution twenty-three oh six, designate the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the general fund reserves.
Is there a second? That's it, it's been moved by Trustee Thompson and second by Trustee Booker to approve resolution twenty-three oh six. Designate American Rescue Act funds to the general fund reserve, we will do a roll call vote, Trustee Booker. Uh, Trustee Woods, uh, Trustee Holmes, or Trustee Johnson, uh, Trustee Greaves. Uh, Trustee Townsend, President Monk, um, more of a revolution and deep doubt. Um, most of the revolution is adopted. The next item on our agenda is consider revolution twenty-three oh seven. Signing the Monsanto settlement unused funds to general fund reserves.
Thank you, President. Um, so two weeks ago, I believe it was, we received a check. If you remember, the Monsanto settlement has happened back in twenty twenty-two, where the village received a letter stating that we could receive about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, and uh, and we just needed to make a statement saying that we weren't going to pursue an illegal action for that settlement. Which the board took action on to approve that. Um, uh, this was Monsanto who, uh, in a bunch of wild ways, put in uh some contaminated materials. Putting more into the uh riverland. Well, the check I received was in the amount of like three hundred and forty-three thousand, so it was more than we thought. Just great news, someone must have pushed or something that changed that formula and positive for everyone to pass it. And I checked the other communities and it was very consistent that they had received more as well. Uh, meanwhile, we also took action back in twenty twenty-two that we would use majority of those funds for the Beaver Creek Bridge projects. Over on um Fifty Earth Streets. That was estimated that the village portion would be two hundred and forty thousand, so it's going to use multiple settlement. Literally that same week I received word um from the Department of Transportation. That they heard from the federal government that our contribution construction instead of twenty percent of the cost would be zero. So now we're only paying for a portion of the design, which is that, I think I remember right, thirty-eight thousand dollar number. So all of a sudden now, from going using majority of the Monsanto settlement, we're using little of it. So it's now a question of what do you do with the unused funds, so similar what we've kind of talked about. Um, you know, with the previous resolution we approved, this is where I'm just running that important general fund reserves. This will help us through the next few years and then at a future date, this is going to be well-used for another one-time project. Uh, this is going to really help us with the financial situation for the ten-four.
Alright. Any questions or comments? Meanwhile, please. I know, we can make.
I know, I just. It was it was good week.
If there are no questions, we do need a motion to approve our position twenty-three oh seven.
I move to approve resolution twenty-three oh seven.
It's been moved by trustee Holmes, in fact, by trustee Thompson to approve resolution twenty-three oh seven. Assigning a patent settlement unused funds to general fund service. We will do a roll call vote. Trustee Booker, uh, trustee Woods, uh, trustee Holmes. Trustee Johnson, uh, trustee Reeves, uh, trustee Thompson, uh, President Montgomery. Uh, resolution is adopted. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consider village board meeting schedule and I believe that's in our packet. Um.
So on the schedule that we approved at the beginning of the year, we mentioned that we would have a virtual meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth. Since the day before is Juneteenth, and then on that same schedule, we did not have a meeting. July third, because the next day was Fourth of July. Um, so to try to just space those out a little bit, um, and just knowing some of the things that would be coming up on a future agenda. Uh, I wanted to ask the board if if it would be okay to just move, instead of having a virtual meeting on June twentieth. To move that to Monday, June twenty-sixth in person. And that way it would speak something needs a little bit more, and we will have a person that lines up a little bit better for our preparation of future agenda.
Is there anyone that that would cause an issue for? June twenty-sixth. If not, uh, we need a uh. We need a motion to just.
It's got to be a majority vote, so.
Most, so is, uh, do we have anyone that would?
I I move that we reschedule the village board meeting to from Tuesday, June twentieth to Monday, June twenty-sixth.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Woods, in fact, by trustee Thompson, the move to reschedule the board meeting count on Tuesday, June twentieth. To Monday, June twenty-sixth. All of a favor, uh, any opposed? As having motion here is, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is adjourned, so moved at six fifty-five PM. And we didn't welcome our attorney in person. Attorney Mike, really, thank you so much.
Well, thanks everyone for listening.